I guess that's our 10 o'clock wake up call. Ryan? Do we have a forum?
Yes, it appears we have a forum. Yes, we do.
Okay, I'm afraid that I have to start today's meeting on a sad note. Yesterday, we learned of the passing of Sylvia Deutsch at age 96. Sylvia was that all too rare combination of a formidable intellect, political savvy, and an absolute dupe. To my knowledge, she's the only person who has served as the head of the city's two major land use bodies, our commission and also the BSA. And she was the first woman to serve as Chair of the Planning Commission. Today, we take for granted that we have a BSA that is a professional, well-functioning body. But that wasn't always the case, and it is a testament to Sylvia that she fundamentally transformed that body during the Koch administration. And so I'd actually like to begin today's session with a moment of silence in honor of Sylvia. Thank you. And I guess it is now over to the Secretary.
Sure, I will actually first lay out some of the general information about our remote public hearings and how to participate. So verbal testimony may be provided online through the NYC Engage portal or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial and participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participation ID. The password is a numeral one. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. Please note that whether you are accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must first register to speak if you want to speak. Those right, those accessing the meeting online will have the option to turn on their camera while giving testimony. When it is your turn to speak, you will be notified and promoted to a panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and give you the ability to turn on your camera. Please listen closely for your name to be called. There will be a short period where it will appear that you are no longer in the meeting. Do not be alarmed. You should rejoin the meeting as a panelist. Please note that promoting speakers does take a little time, so we ask for your patience. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. For those listening to the hearings, the online live stream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. It is not possible to testify through the online live stream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must first register to speak through the dial and participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It's not possible to testify via telephone without having first registered. Speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via live stream that the live stream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. The mailing email address can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. And lastly, please note that the remote public hearing and all testimony provided is being recorded.
Thank you, Brian. And with that, we will officially begin the City Planning Commission Remote Public Hearing, and I will turn it over to the Secretary.
Morning Commissioners. Good morning all. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting Held Remotely Through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021. I will now call the roll. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cerula.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marie.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rappashaw.
Here.
The forum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, June 9th, 2021.
On the minutes, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
Next item, scheduling on calendars numbers one through 12 and supplemental calendar numbers one through five. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, July 14th, 2021, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage portal.
On the resolutions, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page 48. Reports, Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 13 through 17. CD 3, calendar number 13, N 210296 RCR. Calendar number 14, N 210146 RCR. Calendar number 15, N 210298 RCR. Calendar number 16, N 210304 RCR. Calendar number 17, N 210367 RCR. The matter of applications for the grant of certifications for adoption on calendars numbers 13 through 17. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerula.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marie.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappashaw.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 13 through 17 have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 51. Citywide, calendar number 18. N 210270 ZRY. A public hearing in the matter of an application for an amendment to the zoning resolution concerning elevate transit zoning for accessibility.
Our first speaker will be Councilmember Keith Powers.
I don't believe Councilmember Powers is yet in the room. We've reached out to his office to get him to Zoom, so we'll alert you when he, when he's here.
Thank you, and we'll afford him the courtesy that we do to elected officials of being able to jump the queue. Okay, we will begin with, as is our practice, speakers in opposition and speakers in support. Our first speaker is Basha Gerhart.
It appears that Ms. Gerhart is not in the room as well.
Okay, then we will turn to Jim Wright.
Morning. Should I go ahead and start here?
Yes, please.
Yes, my name is Jim Wright, speaking for the American Institute of Architects, New York, also known as AIA New York, the professional organization representing New York City's public and private sector architects. AIA New York strongly supports the goals of zoning for accessibility proposal, which will accelerate accessibility to the city's transit network and relieve congestion on overcrowded public sidewalks. We believe that it reasonably balances the interests of the public and private sector in achieving these goals. In addition, broader city planning goals such as the creation of more affordable housing and sustainability goals can be strengthened by aligning these land use initiatives with the city's robust transit network. After assessing the details of proposed tax amendment, AIA New York offers several recommendations that we believe would make CFA more effective for the city administration, the MTA, private developers, and community boards that represent the public. The first is publish maps either in the zoning resolution if practical or alternatively on a dedicated MTA website showing zoning lots affected by the 50-foot, 500-foot, and 1,500-foot radius catchment zone from transit stations. Since this is difficult to geographically relate transit station boundaries with private property limits, this would allow property owners to determine whether their property is affected by ZFA provisions. Second, regarding the transit bonus for high-density districts, we believe that it is in the city's interest that applicable mandatory inclusionary housing provisions in a given zone district also apply to any bonus floor area authorized under ZFA if that area is developed for residential use. Additionally, where multiple development bonuses can be overlaid or stacked on a site, voluntary inclusionary housing bonus should be applied prior to using a transit improvement bonus. Third, again regarding the transit bonus provisions for high-density districts, ZFA text is vague on the criteria used to determine the significant quote-unquote transit improvements to be provided by a developer, coupled with the appropriate proportional floor area bonus authorized. Prescriptive criteria similar to those included in the East Mentown Zone District could be used as a model, or if it is unwieldy to create a standardized ZFA criteria for different, different development sites than a finding, supported with documentation by the MTA, that the fair market value for the transit bonus on a given site is commensurate with the value the proposed transit improvements could be required as part of the authorization process. Finally, we are offering. Okay, I'll just go ahead and go to the end. So thank you for the opportunity to offer AIA New York support for ZFA. And we share our recommendations to strengthen the city's accessibility, public transit, and land use goals. Thank you.
Thank you for testifying on behalf of the AIA, Mr. Wright. And I'll now turn it over to Commissioners to see if there are any questions. Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, if you have one additional recommendation, and just one, I'd like to hear it.
Oh, yeah, we did. Consider the possibility that, that some sites in medium density R6, 7, and 8 zone districts could support significant transit improvements in exchange for commensurate transit bonus. If developed for residential use, the bonus would boost the city's affordable housing production. So that, that was the other item that we were considering.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you very much. And I understand that Basha Gerhart is rejoining the room?
Yes, we're voting her now.
All right, thank you. Are you able to, okay, now I see.
Yes, please.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Good to see you all. Sorry, technical difficulties coming back to the office. All right, I guess my time's already started, so good morning. And thank you, everyone, for taking the time this morning to discuss this topic and for listening to our points today. My name is Basha Gerhart, Senior Vice President of Planning for the Real Estate Board of New York. RevMe fully supports the goal of increasing ADA access to our subway stations. Positively, the proposal converts a little-used existing special permit in certain high-density districts to an authorization and will regularize the transit improvement floor area bonus to incentivize use of these tools. RevMe fully supports this aspect of the proposed text. However, we are the firm view that the reach of the text as drafted with respect to the easement requirement is far broader than necessary. Key concepts are not clearly defined. The MTA is given carte blanche for its easement. There is no limit on the relative size of the easement, how much street frontage it can cover, or even whether the development site is in a location where an easement is economically or physically feasible. The MTA can require a perpetual easement regardless of whether it will have the budget to build out the space or improvements. The MTA may take as long as it likes to issue an easement volume agreement, while not even plans can be submitted to the Department of Buildings for the start of construction. No application may be submitted and no work may proceed until the MTA obtains an agreement it finds satisfactory. The easement portions of the text are likely to create an unintended consequence chilling the viability of multifamily affordable housing, which may lose access to the term sheets, abatement programs, and other avenues of financing necessary for the production of affordable housing by the time the owner may actually file at the Department of Buildings to begin work. Additionally, without any timeframe for actual use of the easement and with the MTA's ability to call back the space at a moment's notice in commercial leasing terms, the text all but guarantees an underutilized void adjacent to a transit station. The easement portion of the text, if significantly revised, could address these concerns and still play a useful role in providing the MTA with the space it needs to make its system more accessible. Attached to RevMe's written submission are suggestions for how to improve the transparency of what the MTA and the city at large needs as it pertains to the easement request. Additionally, the text requires a real ministerial relief valve for those properties that are ill-suited physically or financially for the provision of the easement volume and a robust vesting language for projects already approved through ULP or BSA action for any project currently filed for discretionary action and for projects that have already received a building permit from the Department of Buildings. The deep flaws and unintended consequences of the portions of the proposal relating to the easement mean they should be approved if and only if the serious overreaching and impermissibly broad aspects are curtailed and all timeframes are limited. Therefore, RevMe strongly urges the City Planning Commission to approve the portions of the tax amendment that simplify and expand the level of improvement bonus, but not to approve the easement portions of the tax amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhart. I'll now turn it over to the Commission for any questions. Not seeing any. I'll thank you again for your testimony. And Mr. Secretary, I might suggest that, given that Councilmember Powers had indicated his interest in speaking, that perhaps we could, oh, actually, we do have another, another speaker. I will then call on Mike Schweinberg.
Don't quite yet have Mr. Schweinberg in the, in the Zoom room, although he has signed up, so he should be joining shortly.
Okay, then what I might suggest is, given that both Mr. Schweinberg and Councilmember Powers had indicated an interest in speaking, that we temporarily suspend this public hearing without closing it and move on to the next item on our agenda. And then we will, following that, if speakers have in fact joined the room, resume.
Yes, we could do a second call. So certainly, so, yeah, let's do, let's, Mr. Secretary, if we could call the, the next item.
With this hearing?
Absolutely. Next item, Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 19 and 20. CD 8, calendar number 19. C 210249 ZMK. Calendar number 20, N 210250 ZRK. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 840 Atlantic Avenue rezoning.
And both Edwin and Ryan, I note that this was indicated to be a team, an applicant team presentation, but as the applicant team is comprised of only two members, I'm afraid that we will not be able to have a team presentation, but rather we'll have two, three-minute presentations with questioning from each of the speakers following their three minutes. And so we will begin with a three-minute presentation with Benjamin Stark.
Can you hear? Can you, am I, am I coming through?
Yes, you are. Please begin.
All right, thank you, Chair Lego. My name is Ben Stark, and this is my colleague, Stephanie Marazzi. We're actually a team of three. We apologize. Stephanie and I share, share a camera, so we're not, we're not one, we're, we're two. And then our, and then the project developer, Mr. Tom Lee, is, is our third. I hope that perhaps we could have a little more time than, given that fact.
Actually, please, thank you for clarifying that. If you could add, ask the third member of your team to please register and sign in, and we'll now begin. Okay, and we'll now begin the 10-minute team presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm Ben Stark. This is Stephanie Marazzi. We're from Pershing Singer Epstein. We, we represent the applicant of Vanderbilt Atlantic Holdings, the ground tenant of 840 Atlantic Avenue, which you see before you on your screen. This application, this ULP application will rezone M11 zone property on the corner of Vanderbilt Avenue and Atlantic Avenue in the Prospect Heights neighborhood of Brooklyn to a C63X zoning district. The application will also establish an MIH area. And the application will also propose us to amend the zoning resolution to facilitate wider, more pedestrian-friendly sidewalks when the new building is constructed. And as I note here, the, the project would facilitate the replacement of a, a pretty well-known drive-through McDonald's. Next slide, please. Okay, so what would this facilitate? This, this application would facilitate development of the new mixed, mixed-use and mixed-income 18-story building with approximately 316 dwelling units. Right now, the application proposes to comply with MIH under, under option two, which has a 30% affordability requirement yielding approximately 95 affordable housing units. The, the building will also include non-residential uses on the entirety of its ground and second stories. Next slide. Okay, I wanted to provide another rendering that came a little later in our ULP process. This is kind of flipped around, looking east. We see some adjacent existing developments nearby that we'll talk about in a little bit. Next slide, please. Where are we? Okay, I know many are familiar with this area or not, too far flung. We're, we're two blocks east on Atlantic from the Barclays Center on the corner of Vanderbilt Atlantic. This view has you looking west, downtown Brooklyn in the distance, and the lower Manhattan skyline further beyond. Next slide, please. What is the action here? You could see that we have real, some real 1961 legacy M11 zoning, still occupying quite a bit of frontage in this area of Prospect Heights. This is a low-density zoning classification that I'm certain the Commission is familiar with. It does not permit residential use and intends to yield one-story garage warehouse-style buildings. The proposed zoning classification is, is a flexible commercial district, C63X, that when combined with other, the other districts in our, in existing R6B on the, on the southeast portion of the site would yield a blended FAR for the new development of 8.83. Next slide, please. What is our development site? Okay, 840 Atlantic Avenue consists of a, of a number of different tax parcels that, that will, prior development be merged into a single zoning lot. I just mentioned this a little second ago, but a portion of the site is, is also remains R6B on the southeast corner. Next slide. And this kind of gives you a sense of what the existing conditions are. It's mostly made up of the drive-through, but there are a few out parcels as, as well that would be demolished prior to new development. Next slide, please. This gives you a better sense of where we are. We're looking east along Atlantic, Atlantic 120-foot-wide, wide street, very heavily trafficked by, by vehicles. We have the 550 Vanderbilt Development, one of the first buildings built in Pacific Park, shown on the left side. This, this image is a little dated. On the right-hand side of the image, between Clinton Avenue and Vanderbilt Avenue, we're seeing low-rise structures. Those have since been replaced by a building known as 809 Atlantic, which was before the Commission a few years ago. Next slide, please. We've now flipped around to Vanderbilt, looking north. The development site is on the right. Next slide, please. We're now flipped around, looking down Vanderbilt, 550 Vanderbilt on the right-hand side. We can see a, a pretty common condition for Atlantic and Vanderbilt, lots of traffic and pedestrians as well. Next slide, please. I've moved up a little closer to the median. You can again see, we've got quite a bit of foot traffic, quite a bit of vehicular traffic. The 100-foot-wide Vanderbilt Avenue shown on the right, we're in the middle of the 120-foot-wide Atlantic Avenue where the photo is taken. Next image, please. Okay, so what, what is the justification for this rezoning? This location is, another real way to say, this is a great location for housing. We have an exceptionally high vehicular traffic counts. We're, in addition to a busy pedestrian corner, we have two wide streets bounding the development site, like I said, 120-foot-wide Atlantic Avenue, 100-foot-wide Vanderbilt Avenue. We, next slide, please. We have really close proximity to not just a, a, a local, a, a, a public transit in, in the way of buses and, and, and the, the subway at Clinton, Clinton-Washington Avenue, but we also have regional transit access, a mere 10-minute walk to the west at the Barclays Center. These, these, this proximity to public transit is important in the way that we've thought about the value of the project and that it really provides access to opportunity for, for the resident, the future residents of the building. If we think of, of the, kind of the commuting catchment basement of a, of a given residence, there are thousands and thousands of jobs that will be available to the, the low-income and, and market rate tenants of this building. Next, next slide, please. Like I said, 10-minute walk to the Barclays Center to the west. We have a three-minute walk up Clinton Avenue to the AC stop on the corner of Fulton and Clinton. Next slide, please. And the final justification, major justification is, is the surrounding area context. This building is, is adjacent to some comparatively sized buildings. In fact, some buildings that are quite a bit taller. In this image, you can see the 312-foot-tall 809 Atlantic on the north side of, of Vanderbilt and Atlantic Avenue. And we're also adjacent to the 205-foot-tall 550 Vanderbilt. One of the condo building is, that is part of Pacific Park. And although if, if these buildings are theoretical, although approved, we, the, the proposed development at 840 Atlantic is, is notably smaller than some of the future buildings that will be constructed with Pacific Park to the west. Next slide. Oh, and, and this shows you 809 Atlantic directly across the street. A fairly attractive building, in my personal opinion. Next slide, please.
Time?
Yes? Hello?
Time's up.
I would also note, Mr. Stark, that if you want to continue to avail the privilege of a 10-minute team presentation, three different members must testify. It is not an excuse for one person to speak for 10 minutes, as was explained previously.
Understood. Well, some of our later slides get.
Your time is up. You, with one speaker, use the entirety of the 10 minutes. And that is not what a team presentation means. It means the Commission should have had the opportunity to hear from three different speakers. And with that, I turn it over to the Commission for questioning.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I'm just looking for the raised hand.
Thank you. Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you're the right person to answer this, but there was some comments about a dance studio being placed in the retail space at a substantially low rent for the benefit of the community. Are you the right people to speak to that, or?
Absolutely. It's one of our, our primary commitments with this, this project. Our client, the developer, Vanderbilt Atlantic Holdings, is, has agreed to provide a, 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 up to 8,000 square foot. agreed to provide a, 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 up to eight thousand square foot, uh, space, uh, for a, a local, um, arts organization, a dance studio, as, as you mentioned, by the name of Creative Outlet. Uh, although no lease has been, um, finalized as now, we're, we're, we're in discussion to do a, a ten, 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 uh, lease, uh, with, with tenants, right, of, of renewal, um, significantly below market. And as, uh, was, uh, uh, asked during the review session a couple of days ago, yes, absolutely. We, uh, the developers committed to, uh, executing and recording a restrictive declaration that would ensure the, the, um, that the space would, would be available for, uh, a, a community facility user like Creative Outlet in perpetuity.
But, but the original lease is ten, ten, ten?
The, the lease, yeah, that's the, the lease that we're negotiating right now.
Got it. Uh, but a- and after the expiration of that lease, there will be a commitment to keep that space for some kind of public benefit, um, in perpetuity.
Uh, yeah, a, a non-for-profit. We, we would like, right now, our belief, our feeling is that we shouldn't limit it to a non-for-profit arts organization. It's hard to predict where the where the borough is going to be thirty years from now. I mean, ideally, Creative Outlet is there. They signed another thirty-year lease, ten-year, uh, thirty years now, but we can't, uh, project that. Uh, but we, we're, we, we're inclined to, to have the restrictive declaration, note that the space will be, uh, 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 locked for, for a non-for-profit community facility user, but that's kind of the, the catchword.
And the, um, the pricing was a big incentive for that. So would that be also in perpetuity below market? Rent?
I mean, that's something we can discuss with, with our client after the fact. I, I don't know. You know, transactionally, we'll have to discuss how that would look in a restrictive declaration. Um, but, but, uh, we can assure you that, that the, the thirty-year lease, uh, with the tenants' right of renewal after each tenure term is, is significantly below market.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Stark. Is your client signed up to speak here or one of the architects? Involved in the project?
Um, our client, our client, Mr. Lee, is, is signed up.
Okay, good. So it, yeah, it's, it's always very helpful for us to hear directly from the applicant and not from, you know, professional advisors, let's say. Um, I do have, I have questions and I don't know if you're the right ones or you want to defer to future speakers about the choice of affordable housing program here. Um, I noticed that you've, uh, indicated a plan to use option two while the local area median income is below that. So, uh, it would seem to indicate that, um, option one, um, and perhaps coupled with a deep affordability option would be more appropriate for this neighborhood. So I'm interested in the applicant's, um, thoughts on that. And I also have a question about the treatment of the, um, grand floor space and how we know we're going to get an active sidewalk here, but that may not be your line of work.
We're dead, we're definitely in the line of work of talking about the sidewalk, but if you, if you would like to hear about the affordability from, from the project developer, Tom is, is here and available. I, but we can answer those, those questions as well. But Tom, are you, are you on?
Yes, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
We have picked option two initially because we wanted to maximize the number of affordable units. And with the hu- three hundred sixteen total apartments, we estimate about a hundred apartments would be affordable under option two. As we went through the community board process, we heard a lot of feedback about potentially, uh, changing to option one, which we're absolutely open to. Um, I think we were okay with the sixty percent A M I with twenty-five percent of the building being affordable.
Okay, well, that flexibility is good to hear and we recognize that, uh, that the choice is not entirely ours. That's really something that will get decided at the, um, city council level, but, uh, personally, it would seem to me that, um, the deeper affordability would, um, better serve the needs of the neighborhood.
Sidewalk. I can.
Activating the sidewalk. Yeah, so the plan is to, um, widen, provide for a wider sidewalk than, than usual. And the renderings that we were shown at the review session, um, were a little hard to read. Um, sometimes what happens when these, I mean, it sounds, um, like a good idea always to have a wide sidewalk, but sometimes when they're not properly planned, those just become vacant spaces for people to hide out and dump trash. Um, I don't expect that's your intention at this very highly trafficked location, but I think it's really important to know that we're getting active ground floor space that's going to be, um, an addition to the neighborhood and not a detraction. So how are you planning the ground floor?
Absolutely. Uh, Tom, you want to start? I mean, I have some thoughts on this that you, that we've spoken with, with the project architect, but do you want to give us?
Sure. Uh, I, I think in the past, people were concerned whether or not we're going to put a bit box retail, a single tenant in the space, which I've stated publicly that that's not our intention. Um, to me, given what's happened over the past year, uh, mixed retail tenant base is a safer choice for the project. And we certainly want to have multiple tenants. Um, and variety of local tenants would be preferred. From food and beverage to pharmacy to, to other users. So we want to activate the retail and also to have a diverse, uh, income stream that, that will support the project. So that's really our thought. I think it makes economic sense to have, um, activated sidewalks that will benefit both the project and the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Edie.
Just wanted to follow up on the questioning of, uh, Commissioner Dwyer regarding the dance space. You mentioned that it's up to eight thousand square feet. I just wanted to know if there's a minimum, um, you know? Is eight thousand the approximate number or is that the maximum? And if, if it is the maximum, is there a men- men- minimum?
The eight thousand is actually the exact square footage we were, um, discussing with Creative Outlet. The current design, we have a preliminary design. That's actually slightly, you know, eight thousand fifty or eight thousand something slightly above eight thousand square foot. We're now looking to reduce the square footage. Um, I think it's the number we're targeting.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernie.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just going back to the sidewalk activation topic again. As you probably know, Vanderbilt Avenue, uh, is currently part of the D O T Open Streets Program. And as a result, Vanderbilt, I mean, a block or two north of your site, but then all the way up to, uh, Grand Army Plaza is closed at certain times to traffic. There's a temporary bike lane setup. There's a lot of, um, sidewalk and, and parking lane activation. And I'm assuming that, you know, once these two lots, your lot and the, and the adjacent one on Vanderbilt are developed, the open streets, as it becomes permanent, which is part of D O T's future planning, uh, would be incorporated in that, in that planning. So I just think, you know, the, uh, Prospect Heights Neighborhood Development Council has been very actively involved in the Open Streets Program and how that's used and how it's designed and so on. I think it would be very helpful for you to have a conversation with them about the sidewalk, uh, and with D O T that would contribute to the long-term uh, success of that Open Streets Program on Vanderbilt when it, when it happens. I think your building could be a really welcome addition because the Vanderbilt really dies when you get past the, when you get down to the McDonald's. I think this could be a really positive change. But, uh, yeah, I recommend you talk to, uh, Prospect Heights Labor Development, uh, Council and, uh, D O T.
Absolutely. We, well, I'm personally a big fan of the program. I think it'd be great to work with the, the different groups to make that happen.
Not seeing any other raised hands. I will thank the development team. And we will now turn to our first speaker, Gibb Bracconi.
Morning Commissioners and Madam Chair. I hope you can, I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes, we can.
My name is Gibb Bracconi and I'm speaking on behalf of Community Board AID as C B AID is unable to be present here this morning. Um, as I previously testified in hearing, hearings like this one, I ask you to note that for more than eight years, Brooklyn Community Board AID has worked to create and communicate a vision for the development of an area currently zoned M one one along Atlantic Avenue between Vanderbilt and Franklin Avenue and extending south on the east end of Bergen Street. This area includes on its western end, the lots referenced in today's application. The board believes this area, known as M Crown, which stands for Manufacturing Commercial Residential Opportunity for a Working Neighborhood, offers a unique opportunity to expand employment and provide affordable housing in twenty-six acres currently vacant or underutilized between two rapidly gentrifying neighborhoods of North Crown Heights and Prospect Heights. We regret that despite our efforts, we have not yet been able to move the vision forward with the city as a neighborhood rezoning. In February of twenty eighteen, the Department of City Planning presented the community board with a zoning framework for the M Crown District. The following August, C B A, Borough President Adams and City Council Majority Leader Combo responded with a highly supportive letter proposing density and uses for the subzones contained in the framework, including those along Atlantic Avenue. Our proposal addresses the M Crown goals by providing for eight hundred and five thousand square feet of non-residential use along Atlantic Avenue and one thousand units of housing with two hundred and fifty affordable. Since August of twenty eighteen, C B A's outreach has scheduled, included ten community meetings intended by a hundred and thirty-seven stakeholders, including residents, property owners, developers, real estate professionals, and advocates for industrial jobs and affordable housing. We can say confidently that our vision for Atlantic Avenue has broad support. Unfortunately, the department did not engage with us on the densities and uses C B A proposed for Atlantic Avenue. Instead, over the three years after the department received our response to its M Crown framework, it had parallel discussions with the applicants that led to the proposal we have before us now, discussions to which the community board was not invited and of which it was not made aware. While we regret the lost opportunity for engaging with the applicants over the last three years, at this time, C B A believes the application for eight forty Atlantic Avenue should move forward only if it is aligned with the board's vision for Atlantic Avenue as expressed to D C P in August of twenty eighteen for the following reasons. First, as mentioned previously, the density the board and elected officials have proposed will create a substantial number of affordable apartments, commercial spaces, and thoughtfully planned public realm improvements. Second, the density of seven F A R for Atlantic Avenue and the lesser densities along Pacific Street are the appropriate ones in, in response to the context of a historic neighborhood largely zoned R six B. And finally, we have seen that the higher density proposed by the.
Mr. Bracconi, I'm, I'm afraid that your time is up, but I anticipate that there will be questions from the commission. And I also want to extend my thanks to the members of C B A who are just fabulous, engaged, and expert partners in planning for M Crown, which is such a dynamic segment of one city.
Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Ron Pershot?
Yeah, I just, uh, thank you. I just want to hear the final reason.
Certainly. Um, we've seen that the higher density proposed by the applicants creates the expectation among other property owners to the east that their lots will receive similar treatment, satisfying them would risk C B A having to abandon plans for the public realm improvements integral to a neighborhood rezoning, along with the community support for the proposed upzoning. So in the current situation where M Crown rezoning will presumably have to take place under a new administration and under a new city council member, it is simply not worth, worth risking alienating the public for a single private application to enhance its project's return if we gen- genuinely want to see more affordable housing built and jobs brought to the district.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Other questions from the commission? Commissioner Levin.
Um, Mr. Bracconi, I just want to be sure you're aware of the application that we certified on Monday that is in community District Three, but part of the M Crown area at ten forty-five Atlantic Avenue. Um, uh, given all the hard work that, uh, your community has done on the M Crown plan, it would be, you know, despite the fact that this is in Board Three, it's going to be really important for us to hear from the broader neighborhood as that project makes it through U L because I think it raises exactly the issue that you just referred to. That density proposed at this location may set an undesirable precedent for other locations further down Atlantic Avenue.
Yes, thank you for that question. I, I just can't emphasize enough how, uh, much we had, would have preferred to have the dialogue about density along Atlantic Avenue with the department over the last three years. That was clearly our, our desire. And, um, I think, uh, that was an unfortunate missed opportunity to bring the community along with how, um, the city views development along Atlantic Avenue and how private applicants do. As I mentioned before, I feel like we've been very successful in creating um, a forum and a platform for property owners, for developers, for, um, brokers and other real estate professionals along with residents. And, um, we feel that's the reason why that our proposal for residential upzoning, it has got the community support it has, whereas others in other parts of Brooklyn are having a lot of difficulty, um, moving, moving forward with, with communities with their communities and their elected representatives. So that's very important to us and we hope that it's important to the city as well.
Yeah, well, it's certainly important to me. Um, and I, well, I reached across the room and pull out the M Crown plan. It sits on my desk along with the council member, the community board eight letters and the council members' letters that you just referred to. Um, notwithstanding the fact that we haven't moved that into zoning, uh, for many of us on the commission, it became, that it remains an important guidepost to what is appropriate. And as someone who's worked my way through these kinds of community planning efforts in other locations of the city, I know how difficult it is and how valuable it is to pull together, um, a community framework to guide future development. So we've got to continue to pay attention to that. Thanks for the hard work.
Thank you.
And not seeing any other hands, I will thank you again, Mr. Bracconi, um, not just for your testimony today, but for all of the work on the M Crown plan.
Thank you very much.
And our next speaker will be Pierce Hill. Or Pierce Hilly, I'm sorry.
Uh, good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, please.
Alrighty, hi. Good morning. My name is. And I'm a member of thirty-two B J. I'm here today on behalf of my union to express our support for the proposed project at eight forty Atlantic Avenue. Thirty-two B J supports responsible developers who invest in the communities where they build. We believe that the best way to make sure the developments like the one proposed have a positive impact on building service workers, the community, and the community is for developers to make a formal commitment to pay the prevailing wage. In light of this, I think I'm muted again.
No, do you have two units on? Are you running in the background?
Oh, okay, uh, let me see.
Or a phone. Sometimes it's, if you're in two locations.
You're on twice. It echoes.
Okay, hello?
Yes, that's much better, Mr. Hilly. Thank you.
Okay, my apologies. Um, let's see, where was I? Uh, we believe that the best way to make sure that developments like the one proposed have a positive impact on building service workers and the community is for developers to make a formal commitment to pay the prevailing wage. Uh, in light of this, we are pleased to let you know that the developer affiliated with this project, Vanderbilt Atlantic Holdings LLC has made an early commitment to creating prevailing wage building service jobs at the site. The developers have a long-time partnership with thirty-two B J and a track record of creating good jobs throughout their portfolio. Uh, we estimate that this will lead to the creation of five new building service jobs. We are in full support of this project and we have full confidence that Vanderbilt, that Vanderbilt Atlantic Holdings will be a responsible employer and presence in the community. We know that this development will continue to uphold the industry standard and provide opportunities for working families to thrive in Crown Heights. On behalf of thirty-two B J S E I U, I respectfully urge you to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? Well, thank you again for your testimony. And I would ask, Ryan, I see that most of the people are signed up to speak, whether anyone has registered while the hearing has been underway?
No, we have no further speakers on this. Um, I will note that we have, uh, several speakers from our first item have, have joined the room uh, including council member Powers.
Okay, so we will close the hearing for eight forty Atlantic Avenue and we will now resume the hearing on Elevate Transit Zoning for Accessibility and beginning with Councilman Powers. And council member, you are not subject to our time limit.
Hello there. Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you all. I'm, uh, uh, is my, is my time starting?
There's no time limit.
No time.
As long as you'd like.
I, it's nice to be a city council member. Uh, well, first of all, nice to see you all. And I know it's some of you more recently than others, but I hope you're all staying safe and healthy and thank you after a big day in democracy in New York City for. I hope you're all staying safe and healthy, and thank you after a big day in democracy in New York City for keeping us moving here, uh, when it comes to what is the future of New York City. Um, I wanted to just jump on today. I didn't have prepared comments, but I did want to add my voice of just general support for the zoning for accessibility proposal, as before, all of us coming to, hopefully coming to the city council as well. I've been, um, you know, involved in talking about this issue for some time now, dating back to at least last year. Uh, I actually did an op-ed in Crane's talking about some ways we could improve the transit corps in Manhattan and Midtown in my district. And, uh, this is one of the ideas that I had put forward, which is to expand this existing program to create better accessibility around Midtown, uh, and other parts of the city now as well. Um, we've also seen and heard from applicants who were interested and eager to take advantage of this if it was, uh, if it applied to them. So we know that there are going to be people that come forward that will, uh, want to take advantage of, I think, the ZCA, ZFA proposal if we, as a city, do enhance it and expand it. Um, I, I think many of you have probably heard already the stats of what our, where our subway system is when it comes to accessibility. And whether you are in a wheelchair or a parent with a stroller or just a simple New Yorker who is looking to get around this city, we are, I, I believe, failing so many New Yorkers in terms of accessibility. And so as we've done capital projects in my district in, through the East Midtown rezoning or in, on Seventh Avenue or other places to add accessibility, we still have a really large gap in the city. So I think there is a proposal here that can help us get closer to our goals of doing full accessibility in the subway system. I think the good idea of not having it cost us much money, but to use, uh, private investment to help fund it is a, is a notable, uh, way to accomplish that, or at least to get to closer to our goals. And as we talk about where we are in our city transit fund, our city and state transit funding, I think the, the opportunity idea to be able to use some existing projects or projects that want to come forward and add to our, uh, to our public transit system is a important one. So I wanted to join you all just to add a level of support. I have said publicly, I, I prepare, I propose to, uh, I plan to vote on this in support when it comes to the city council. And I, I hope my colleagues will join me, but I wanted to add a voice here as well, to that as well today. And I will add, I've looked at some of the resolutions my community boards have put forward or some of the ideas they put forward about ways to enhance it. Um, so committee board five, two board six and others, and I agree with some of them in terms of ways we might be able to revise it and tweak it to make it better. And we'll send some of those over in writing as well. But I think on the grand whole of this, this is one of the proposals that is before us that we can get done this year to make our city more prepared for the future and to help New Yorkers who really need it. So I just wanted to add my voice of support for it, uh, today, uh, very unscripted, uh, just sharing my thoughts with you about what I think is a overall good proposal and kind of matches what we've done in other places where we, like in East Midtown as an example, where we really let private development also in public realm and public transit be all connected to each other. So uh, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come and spend a few minutes with you today. Nice to see you. Uh, my friend Fred Cerullo and others know very much about East Midtown and what's going on there and how this kind of meshes with that. So I, I hope you guys will give it your strongest consideration. Of course, listen to the community boards and others that I think have made thoughtful ideas about ways to tweak it. But I hope that we all, the City Planning Commission and the City Council will do right by New Yorkers who are uh, asking, I think, very much for a better subway system that is more accessible to so many New Yorkers who can't access it right now.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, for your time, and it may have been unscripted, but it sure was articulate and powerful.
I appreciate that.
To the commissioners.
I was up late listening to the, uh, watching the election results, so, uh, uh, I did about, do I do the best I can? But yes, they happy to take any questions.
I think even on the Zoom screen, we see concealed bags under a number of eyes.
Well, look, everything we're doing right now is talking about the future of New York City. And the work that you guys do, the City Planning Commission is not the political aspect of it always, but is really the sort of the under current of keeping our city running and moving. And I think that's why I think this proposal fits well into that.
Thank you. Um, not seeing any raised hands. Um, oh, yes, Commissioner Bernie, please.
Oh, thank you. And thank you, Councilman, for, uh, coming and talking to us today. I know it's been a, it was a long night last night, so. I just want a quick question. You, you mentioned, uh, community board recommendations and that you were considering them and might support them. And I'm just wondering about two that came from, um, CB six, one to perhaps expand the coverage beyond the R nine, R ten, possibly to R eight or R six districts. And secondly, uh, to have the bonus that would accrue from this trigger the MIH program. And I'm wondering what you feel about those two recommendations from CB six?
Hey, great question. Um, uh, the MAH question, I don't have an opinion today to, to share with you, but I'll, I'll be happy to get back to you with a more formal idea. I think a couple of community boards and some of the email chains I'm on that are going around did seem to think it maybe should apply more broadly to, uh, districts beyond our. Uh, getting more accessibility is a good idea, and I think some of the complete, uh, comments I heard from a lot of folks was just, why start here? Or why end here, I guess I suppose. So I think generally we should probably be looking at that, but I, um, I, I had an ability to go through their resolution and it seemed on its face to be, to me. Uh, I've not had a chance yet to go through those with the actual board to get kind of their larger understanding of it, but um, look, I think the more accessibility we can do here, I think that would be broadly a good idea. And, um, and CBA, I was a former member of the Land Use Committee of CB six myself. I've always found him to be, you know, pretty thoughtful about, not, not to be too reactionary, to be kind of thoughtful about what, um, what the city's needs are from homelessness to housing to accessibility. So I, I always commend them for being pretty well thought out. Um, but I'll be happy to share some further thoughts with the State Plan Commission as I have an opportunity to talk to the board. It has been a hectic few days for me. I will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and I think you are now off the hook.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Nice to see you.
So we will now turn to some other speakers who have signed up, beginning with Mike Schweinberg.
Uh, Mr. Schweinberg, there we go.
I believe, okay, and am I on camera?
We hear you.
I, you hear me? Okay, it's not necessary that I be on camera then. That's fine. Uh, so my name is, that way I don't have to give an audio description of myself, which I like to do. Uh, but again, my name is Mike Schweinberg. I'm the president of the Five-O-four Democratic Club, which is the nation's first and largest advocating for the civil rights of people with disabilities. We are one of only three citywide clubs. And to remove the partisan nature, you hear Democratic Club, please know that our membership includes, uh, Republicans, uh, independents, et cetera. We do not restrict our membership to Democratic enrolled voters. The issues facing disability community are just too complex, limited to any political party. So I last had the opportunity to testify before this august body, and I believe twenty seventeen, uh, when we, uh, the Five-O-four Dems and other disability advocates, I think from Sydney and Disabled in Action shepherded the same concept, uh, from community board ones, committee hearings to the full board to your, uh, to city planning and eventually winning approval by testifying before the city council to create two new elevators at the New York Stock Exchange. There, the developer did the installation himself and paid all costs. So we are delighted to see it now going citywide. But let me address the elephant in the room. What the feedback I, I get is that this is somehow a give back to developers. Well, anyone who knows me knows I wouldn't support unwarranted benefits to that industry. So let me just ask you this. When it came to afford unaffordable, affordable apartments, sure, that was fine. Uh, when it was environmental concerns, okay, that was good. When it came to all the concessions, um, allowed for developers, well, that's just progress, right? But when it comes to accessibility for the disabled, so we can get to school and work on time or shop or go to medical appointments or enjoy social engagements, well, now that's just a bridge too far. Yeah, I remind you that prior or is, will have been state, uh, it has been stated and will a number of times today, uh, we were at a grand point prior to the pandemic where the MTA had designed a plan where fifty percent of the stations would be accessible and, uh, that was, we would be no more than one stop away from, uh, you know, an accessible station, but that.
I'm afraid that your time is up, and I, I thank you for reminding us of your testimony and testimony of other of your colleagues in connection with the accessibility, the developer, um, paid for accessibility to the J and Z station. And so I thank you for, again, coming to testify this time. And I'll ask if any of the commissioners have questions for Mr. Bruce's. Okay, then I will thank you again for your testimony. And we'll move on to, oh, I'm, I'm, actually, I'm sorry. I was thanking Mr. Schweinberg. My apologies. I got ahead of myself. We will now turn to our next speaker, who is Bradley Bruce.
Uh, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, apologies. I'm a little bit under the weather today. Uh, but my name is Bradley Bruce Shears, and I'm the Planning Manager at the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA PCAC. The PCAC and its councils have long advocated for improved system-wide accessibility through various research reports, public testimonies, and participation in accessibility events throughout the region. We are very pleased that the MTA, New York City Department of City Planning, and the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities has embarked on the zoning for accessibility, citywide zoning proposal that will help advance transit accessibility more quickly and take much needed pressure off the MTA's struggling capital program. The COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, has drastically altered the lives of millions in our region and beyond, including pausing the MTA's capital program, which is essential to delivering more accessible options for system riders. Despite this pause, in twenty twenty, the MTA completed eleven new subway station accessibility projects and has increased from seventy to seventy-seven the number of stations it will make accessible in its twenty twenty twenty-four capital program. While this progress is encouraging, there is still so much work that must be completed, considering that just twenty-eight percent of the four hundred and ninety-three subway stations, including Staten Island Railroad, are accessible. Two-thirds of Long Island Railroad city stations are accessible, and just half of Metro North city stations are accessible. Therefore, the City Planning Commission and City Council should approve the zoning for accessibility proposal to support increasing accessible stations within the city for tens of thousands of riders who simply need more options for full participation, whether they be in wheelchairs or on crutches, parents with children, passengers with luggage, or seniors trying to get across town. ZFA will allow the MTA to work with private developers building next to existing stations to provide space for the MTA to build elevators and other station access improvements. This will come at no cost of taxpayers and allow the MTA to set resources aside for additional accessibility projects. We all at one time or another in our lives will need accessible travel options. Therefore, therefore, finding innovative ways such as this proposal will go a long way in helping realizing more accessible MTA network for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce Shears, and thank you also for, um, evidencing yet another reason why being able to have the public testify remotely is so positive. I'm sorry that you're under the weather, but I'm glad that both for your health and for public health that you are still able to testify taking advantage of M Y C engage.
Uh, thank you so much.
And feel better. Uh, let me just check to see if commissioners have questions. Not seeing any, um, you can head back to healing. And our next speaker will be Kathleen Collins.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Collins. I am, uh, a native New Yorker. I lived and I was born here and lived here all my life. I'm a congenital quadruple amputee and an attorney. I, however, I'm not a zoning attorney. I have read over the regulation, and I am definitely in favor of greater accessibility for people with disabilities to the subway system, since I've been wanting this all my life. Um, however, I think this zoning regulation does need a few tweaks that can be done over the next few months to make it stronger and really reach its goal of access for all New Yorkers and all people who want to use the subway system. Um, as Manhattan Borough President Brewer has stated previously in a memo that she wrote last week, uh, she pointed out that this, uh, zoning regulation does not set forth, I mean, it sets forth other purposes such as, uh, beautification, walkability and passenger safety, or improving environmental noise and air quality. However, those are not accessibility. Those are other things which I agree with. Those are wonderful things, but they should not be included in a regulation that's being touted for accessibility. We need to limit this to bringing about subway accessibility. Two, there are no outer deadlines regarding this, uh, zoning regulation as to when the MTA will do the work, as to when the developers would do the work. We all know that we need deadlines. Everybody needs deadlines. Us as people and also agencies need deadlines. If there's no deadlines, we don't know when this will be done. Third, um, this regulation gives the MTA too much discretion even as to basic facts, as to when the accessible entrance and elevators will be open and what standards should apply to such construction. See subdivision two, B of section sixty-six forty-one. There's no requirement for, further, there's no requirement for review and comment by the actor of targeted audiences that, uh, we're trying to reach here, people with disabilities. Finally, as Community Board Six has stated, where in their warehouse clause on the, on their resolution, there must be a legally enforceable mechanism ensuring that improvements are made and maintained as required with remedies specified. There, they were referring to developers, but I submit this should apply to both developers and the transit authority. Thank you. Uh, we will be submitting written comments. Um, thank you for your time and for listening to us. And, um, that's all I have to say right now. Thank you. And if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Thank you for your testimony, and we look forward to getting your written testimony as well.
And we should use that form, and it has been by July fourteenth, correct?
Brian, if you could. That, that would be, that would be helpful, um, to us to have it by that, that date, and you can use the form or you could email it to, to, um, through our, our website.
Oh, is that on the website, the email address?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
Questions from Ms. Collins? Well, thank you again for taking the time. Um, and I do not see any other speakers. Ryan, has anyone else signed up in the last few moments?
Uh, no, there are no further speakers on this item.
Okay, then in that case, the public hearing is closed.
All right, our last item of for discussion today, Borough of Queens, calendar number twenty-one, CD fourteen, C two one zero, one four eight, ZMQ. A public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning one thirty-three Beach One Sixteenth Street rezoning.
Our first speaker will be Elise Poligari for three minutes.
Next slide. Uh, we seek a zoning map amendment that would rezone tax block one six two two six, blocks twenty-five, part of twelve, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three from an R seven A C one three to an R seven A C two four. It is located between Rockaway Beach Boulevard and Ocean Town. The proposed zoning map amendment will enable the applicant to seek a special permit pursuant to VR seventy-three thirty-six with the Board of Standards and Appeals to operate a PCE. Next slide, please. As you can see in the slide, the development site is lots twenty-five and twenty-three, which is constructed with an asset right building. Next slide, please. The proposed action would facilitate two new buildings, buildings A and B, that would rise to eight and four stories respectively, and would include one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine square feet or three point nine nine FAR with a hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and seven square feet of residential space and seventeen thousand, ninety-two square feet of ground floor commercial space, including twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven square feet of seller parking level for residential accessory uses with a hundred and eight accessory off-street parking spaces. You can see the usage here. Next slide. The proposed action would facilitate a new mixed-use development in the area to contain residential use and commercial retail space and would enable us to pursue a special permit at the B F S, um, pursuant to seventy-three thirty-six to provide a PCE. Orange Theory Fitness will occupy that space. The additional uses permitted by the C two four district would promote the vibe. The additional uses permitted by the C two four district would promote the vibrancy of this commercial corridor, which increased pedestrian activity as additional commercial uses such as theater, art, studios and repair shops would be permitted, which are currently lacking given the restrictive nature of the C one three district. The C two four district would allow more types of tenants to occupy the ground floor spaces. In addition, the C two four district would enable the possibility to apply for a discretionary special permit at the BSA, a demonstrated need given the lack of such facilities present. Therefore, given the similar bulk requirements and enhanced use opportunities, the proposed mixed-use district would be consistent with the previous mixed-use character of Beach one hundred and sixteen, one hundred and sixteen street. Next slide, please. Here are some, this is the as of right building, which has already been constructed. You can see what it currently looks like. Eighty-six units are in A, building A and B that have been constructed. You can see them. And A has seventy-eight and B has eight units. Thirty-three units have sold and the owner speaking to two potential commercial tenants besides Orange Theory, which I have already brought up. Next through the slides is just the plans and then I can take any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the commission for Ms. Foligari? Okay, then thank you for your testimony and our next speaker will be Matt Long.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thanks for your time this afternoon, or this morning. So I am Matt Long. I'm a lifelong Rockaway resident and a self-proclaimed fitness junkie after seventeen years with the Fire Department of New York and the Health and Fitness Unit. I have always wanted to give back to my community and have always been looking for the opportunity to bring a fitness concept that could help all demographics of Rockaway. And Beach one sixteen, sixteen street is on the rise with this development. Unfortunately, it wasn't properly zoned for what I need for a group fitness studio. I appealed to the corporate, we're a national, a national chain, but locally owned is what I really wanted to get, get my point across as. But when I appealed to the National Corporate Office of Orange Theory Fitness to allow me to purchase the Rockaway territory, I saw no better spot than one sixteen street. And I'm hoping that with everyone's support, that is something that comes to attrition. If I, I can answer any questions, I keep it as short as possible. But I'm looking forward to bringing Orange Theory to Rockaway Beach.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Long. Let me check to see if there are commissioners with questions. Not seeing any, you are off the hook. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those are the only speakers that I see signed up unless, Ryan, someone has signed up in the last few moments.
Nope, those, that, those are the only speakers on this item.
Okay, then this public hearing is closed. And Edwin, would you like to make some closing remarks before we close the meeting?
Yes, I would. And thank you, Chair Lago. For those of you who were unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal through DCP webpage or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, one twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one zero two seven one.
And with that, this public hearing is closed. And as our next hearing will not be until after the Fourth of July, I wish you all a happy celebration. Goodbye all. Thanks.